Let's begin with a word of prayer and then if you would, remain standing in the pledge to the flag. Go call on our sheriff to open the meeting.
Power here. Our heavenly fathers, thank you so much. Thank you so much for allowing us to come here today and speak about and make decisions for the Covington County community, God. Thank you so much for these men and women who give their time to and their wisdom to assure these things are done properly, God. I ask that you be with each and every one of us as we go throughout our week and give us a good time and always to be able to be a good example for you, God. I ask this nation in your holy name, amen.
Amen. Please join us in the pledge. I plead the.
Greetings to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do appreciate your attendance today, your interest in the business of our county commission, the county as a whole. We have no public hearings scheduled, but we do have some presentations, comments. Glad to invite Chuck Simon to the lecture. Chuck is our extension officer, county extension officer. And in that office, they manage and oversee the activities of our 4H programs and so forth. So Chuck, if you will, come ahead. I know he has some folks with him that he'll be introducing. And we appreciate y'all being here. We appreciate what you do, our county, our kids. So look forward to hearing from you.
Well, this is our annual come to the commission meeting, let you know how we spent your money on 4H and other activities. And as you know, we not only do 4H, but I also do agricultural and natural resource and community development. So we're part of Auburn University and Alabama A&amp;M. And we, I want to, I brought our 4H. Katie Lee is out doing 4H today at a meeting. So I brought Tara Dalton, who's our agent assistant, to introduce everyone else and give you a report.
Okay, good.
Good morning.
Yeah, one more coming. We'll let her come up to the front and join y'all.
So that is Amy Rowling. She started with us this past year. Amy is leading our horse club and we are very proud of the horse club. You'll see that in your book in the back. We are able to use the arena. We thank you so much for that. Today we have Jenny Jeter. She is at Sparta Academy. And then we have Ellie Odom. She is in Florilla. And they are going to speak about their time as state ambassadors.
Okay, good. Welcome you ladies. Ms. Jeter, do you have any relatives that work at the courthouse?
I do.
Just checking. Okay.
So I got started in 4H like many young kids in the classroom. I started with the bake-off and then it just kind of exploded to there. My mom made me do public speaking. I wasn't very fond of that, but she said I had to. And if you know my mother, that was it. But I really loved the bake-off and I won county. And then I went to play second at regionals. And that's where 4H just kind of exploded for me. I joined our youth council. I've been the president for the past two years. And now I'm a 4H state ambassador, serving the state and representing Covington County on the statewide level for the past two years.
Does that include a lot of travel or?
It includes some travel to Columbia and I'm back, but only a couple of times a year.
Okay, good. Well, thank you for being here. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Ellie Odom. I'm a junior at Florilla.
Question for you.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any relatives that are in elected office or have been in elected office?
Terry Holly.
Your granddaddy?
He's my granddaddy.
All right, just checking.
But anyway, so I really started doing a lot in 4H in ninth grade. I started going to some neighboring counties because our county didn't really offer the livestock portion, which I really, really love. But I think going to these neighboring counties, I can really bring back a lot of knowledge that I learned. Because I do livestock skillathon, quiz bowl and judging. And I went to national competitions for skillathon and I'm going this coming up November for quiz bowl. And I'm really, really excited about that. And I hope I can learn a lot of things from these other communities, other organizations and bring it back here. And this is my first year as a state 4H ambassador. And so I'm still learning a lot. Not very good at public speaking yet, but I hope I can get a lot better, so.
That's good, great. So where will the nationals be when you travel there?
They're in Louisville, Kentucky. And it's, I think it's about middle of November.
Yes, good. So do all the ambassadors get to go there or you just have to be involved in a certain activity to?
No, sir, you have to win the state competition. So we won the state competition in quiz bowl this past year. And so my team, there's four of us, we're going to go up there and I'm real excited about it.
I bet, I bet. Well, thank you ladies for being here.
Quiz what?
Quiz bowl. So basically you kind of sit like at a table like this.
Jeopardy or something?
Yeah, kind of. You got buzzers, you buzz in. Mm-hmm.
Well, that's good. Any other questions for these ladies while they're up front?
I'm just proud that they take the initiative to do what they're doing. That means a lot. I mean, for somebody to do that, be dedicated and do what y'all doing, that means a lot. It means a lot to this county and to your schools and everybody else around it sees what you do.
We're really proud to have two ambassadors.
That's good.
We are one of the few counties that do have two.
Well, thank you, Ms. Jenny and Ms. Ellie. We appreciate y'all being here today.
Thank y'all.
Jenna was passing out everything. Jenny Anderson is another agent and assistant in our 4H program. She's in our schools. Also works with horse club.
Okay. Amy, you going to give us a report on the horse club? Anything you want to share?
It's going great.
Is it?
Did y'all see our article in Saturday's paper? We had two and pictures are in there, two of our horse club girls. They went to, they went at state and then they went to regionals in Perry, Georgia at the first of the month. And so we sent, did a big gift basket. We had a couple of stores in town that contributed to be able to give them a send-off for that. So Zach was able to put that in the paper for us because we wanted to celebrate those two. This is only our second year of doing, or our first full year of doing horse club. So to have those girls be excited about it and go and compete and then their families, you know, transferred them and their horses to Perry, Georgia. That's a huge undertaking. So we wanted to make sure we highlighted that. So we.
It's in there, I think.
Yeah, it's in there. But if you didn't.
Tell about that also.
See the picture for, okay, so we, in all of our schools, we try to get the schools to collect food. Sometimes it's for our local food bank. This past year, we did USO and we teamed up with, USO has regions. So the Pensacola Ranch serves a Nova Cell out of Enterprise. And so we took all the food that we had accumulated from all the donations from all of our schools in city and county. And Katie Lee and myself went down there and delivered that on base, gosh, in January, February of this year. And they were overwhelmed with all the stuff we were able to get to them. And so that is a, we'll work with them again in the future, maybe this next year too.
You said that was the first time y'all had done that?
Yes, sir. And we were able to do a tour of that facility and meet a lot of people there. And it's a really neat, they actually have two facilities with the way they set it up. And also we were learning a lot about how we can help them better and where we can plug in with them. So that was a really neat thing. And to be able to support the soldiers, the kids really got behind that. We had a huge amount of donations.
And what they, what they used to do is give the care packages as they're leaving or they don't do it as much because there's not as much deployment. But those coming in, that's when they need it, you know? And so they're able to help them.
Good deal. Do you have a number estimate of how many kids are participating in 4H?
It's only, it's 23, 2400. It's, I think it's on the very front page. It tells how many.
So you continue to have great participation.
Still number one in Alabama.
Number one? That's pretty good. Good deal. Any other questions, comments for these ladies?
You know, I always, I say this a lot, but I still mean it. You know, the 4H, y'all have brought this program back to life and it means so much. You know, and see what the compliments y'all made and the things that where it was at and where it's come back to. And thank you y'all and thank y'all ladies and everybody, the students and everybody that's made this big turnaround and make it what it is now.
It's your support that does that to us, helps a lot.
I would like to thank you to the arena and the use of the facilities. Obviously, horse club wouldn't be possible without that.
You're certainly welcome.
And the guys out there that help. They're always willing to help do whatever I ask, so.
Tell us about these two state finalists at the horse club.
Like, can you talk a little bit about them? Yeah, she did. But that, okay, they're barrel racers.
And so they competed in Montgomery at the state competition back in May? May, may. And then they won a slot.
They were top 15 at state. So, and then they advanced to regionals.
Quite an accomplishment, that's very good.
The end of August, end of July.
For our first year, horse club is a really good place.
And the other opportunity we have for using the arena is our archery team. And to that, we have done for two years now. And we had one of our competitors, he placed first in the 3D archery shooting and his picture's in there. And so for a second year of being able to go to state and having that kind of a placement, we were real excited about that. And that excited the whole team. We have plans on how to better prepare them this next year for that. And hopefully we'll have more that place. And then we can go to the Buckmasters competition that's back in Montgomery. It's in, it's in August. And so we have already geared up for our archery team starting in October for this next year. So and we, and we are thankful to have the arena to practice in. So if it's raining or, you know, whatever the weather is, when it's cold in January, February, we're inside there and so they can continue to practice. And in the past.
Well, before that, we worked outside in the elements and not having, not having that closed space. I mean, it's just, there's no skipping practice, you know?
So we've done well with those two new clubs that we have. And so we have a wide range of clubs. So if you have kids, green kids in any of the schools, ask them what they're doing.
In addition to school activities, you do some summertime activities, summer camp of some kind, right? Day camps? So certainly impacting a lot of kids there. You guys are in every, every school in the county, whether it's in Op City, Andalusia City.
Every school. We don't miss a.
And the commission is fortunate to get to partner with them. You've mentioned the arena a couple of times and we provide that space. But in addition to that, we make an appropriation annually to your office, which pretty much funds some of the 4H operations. That's where it's focused, I think. And then we also provide office space to the 4H, to the extension service. So we get that, yeah. And so they're located in the USDA office building and they have about a quarter of that space, maybe a little more. So we do, I appreciate the opportunity to partner with you and appreciate what you guys did and contribute to our community.
And I see some potential judges for our county roundup.
Start on this side. The employees are all willing and just work your way around, yeah.
I just want to know when the bacon part, me and Tommy want to judge bacon.
I'll be involved and that's going to be a December judge.
Perfect.
I've done that one before.
No doubt.
Anything else? We really appreciate y'all coming. Chuck, thank you for bringing these ladies or having them, asking them to show up. We do appreciate what you do and your impact on our county. Thanks.
Thank you.
We'll move on to comment from other elected appointed officials. Thank y'all again. Judges, do you have anything for us? City of Op offer anything? No, okay. Sheriff? Good, right, okay. Well, thank all of you for being here. We appreciate your attendance. I didn't see you over there. You're supposed to be over here.
I'm going to report the next meeting, you know, how it will be on the agenda and give you all the dispersals of the entities of revenue that's going to come in for 2024.
Was that clear up? Because Chuck, I know since, you know, you reported last time a certain amount of money's increased, but everybody thought the commission was getting that. And the commission not getting that whole amount, the choose.
That's state, schools, counties, cities, all of it. And I will give you the breakdown next meeting on what revenue each hand.
Okay. Thank you, Chuck. We have nothing under consent agenda for today, so we'll move on to old business. And the first item there is consider adoption of updated per diem policy, travel reimbursement policy for the county. And I know Ms. Morgan, you've worked on that and tried to make sure we were aligned with IRS policy. And I think between you and Karen, we've been presented with a proposed finished product. Commissioners have seen this in one form or another a couple of times previously. And it just, it's, it presents as a complicated matter. It's pretty straightforward, but I know we've taken input from employees, department heads and I guess all the commissioners. And let me ask, is there anything you want to point out specifically on it today?
Well, I will share that I know that I kept getting feedback about simple, simple, simple. And when you are dealing with per diem, you do have to make some adjustments for things that are otherwise covered in registration fees. For an example, if someone's going to a class or conference and a meal is provided, you can't also authorize payment for a meal. It's sort of double dipping, right? And where, when you move into a per diem versus turning in receipts for actual meat, actual costs, you just hit a couple of formulas. I know that we, they're, for the most part, you know, it, I tried to do a short answer in hopes that it would be easy to just kind of post for everyone to be able to understand. I will say the only real area perhaps that we would have the authority to make a change to is for single day out of county travel. Right now, it's written to say if it's a shorter trip, theoretically only one meal, right? And expenses would be covered if it was a longer trip, perhaps two meals would be covered. That's the only other area really where I could tell you that the federal guidance supports us maybe just saying flat rate regardless of how long you're out of the office. But I'm happy to answer any questions. I know that the goal has been simple, simple, simple. I do believe that this is as simple as possible. As far as mileage goes, it's the IRS mileage rate. As far as the per diem amount, you are adopting the federal daily rate. And if it changes, you know, they tend to change on fiscal years. And so if you adopt this and it changes in just a few weeks, you don't have to make a change. It will automatically update. So administratively, they know that the amounts will either increase or decrease. And so then it just becomes a matter of whether you're traveling overnight or single day. And then from there, whether meals are included as part of that travel or not.
And the complication to travel policy is if you reimburse it a rate above the federally accepted rate, then all of a sudden it becomes taxable. And that becomes a complication. And that's what we're trying to follow their stated rate so we never over reimburse. But at the same time, you want to reimburse as much as you can to cover the cost unemployed incur. So this tracks that as, I think, very nicely. And as complicated as it is, it can be, I think this is a good.
The only thing, and like I said, I've looked at the one you've sent and it is much more simple than, and broken, the way it's broken down and everything. But what if somebody say they go to a conference and they serving, just for example, look at my shirt, they got a seafood bowl. And these people are allergic to seafood. What do you do about that?
Yeah, so there is a provision in it that says, so you can, okay, so if I'm going to a conference and I have a medical issue and I can't eat what they're serving, I just make note of that. And then I, that meal deduction doesn't apply to me. But it has to be, it does have to be done in advance. The other element of that, so it's medical and religious exemptions for the meals. You know, if they're provided, you can make it so that those deductions don't apply to you. And then also if business is being conducted, because I know sometimes at least, I'm not as familiar with maybe, well, yeah, maybe I am. You know, some of your employees serve as officers of organizations and they go and they have a lunch, but they're actually having a board meeting, right? And so they're not able to eat. So if you're conducting business during that mealtime, you can also eat. You know, we're going to take care of you. So that's all in the policy that's in front of you.
Any other thoughts, questions?
Well, I have several. First of all, we're using federal guidelines, you say, for this rather than what the state's set forth. Because I know the numbers are different.
They are.
But it seems to me the state's policy on this is much simpler. That it's just set out what you're getting for breakfast, what you're getting for lunch, dinner, and then the incidental expenses, which includes, I'm assuming, tax, tips, whatever. And although with all that said, it's still less amount than what we're applying for. So that's, you know, the matter's not that part to me. But it just, it just seems like this is still, the part for me is the food per diem. That we've got to come in, or these ladies in the office are going to have to come in. And they're going to have to decide if you're getting a fourth or a half or three-fourths of a dollar amount, when it would just be easier to say out upfront, this is what you're going to get if you're eating breakfast and you've been gone six hours. Or lunch, whatever it is, just put a dollar amount on it. So that that department head knows what to expect and that employee knows what to expect when they get there. Now, the rest of us, I'm going to put it all in one. When we're talking about the out of county or out of state travel, does that apply to every department in the county? All right, so what's the consequence if you don't follow that? Like if for some reason you come up and say, oh, well, I forgot to tell y'all, but I had to go out of town or we had to, and what we going to do about it? Is there a consequence? Maybe it's not what is, is there one?
So the policy, well, okay, so the policy says out of county travel has to be approved by the department head. And funds have to remain in that department's budget line item before they go. So, you know, if somebody's just sending everyone for travel and they don't have any funding, you know, then.
Or two, now that's what I'm talking about. I mean, it's probably a good thing, but we have had that happen when someone would have to go make a trip. And then it was an after, after the fact would come back and say, well, I forgot to put that in, but.
Well, we have typically, our practice has been to retroactively approve those. But again.
But is this going to change that? Maybe that's what I want to know.
No, I don't, I'm not, I don't think so at all. I think you could retroactively approve.
So we'll just continue on. We'll have a new policy, but we'll just continue on like we've always done.
The policy is addressing the way that we reimburse. The approval for out of state travel specifically has been more of a courtesy and an informational approval to, so that, so that the public is aware that Greg Wyatt is traveling to Tennessee for a meeting on behalf of the commission. And so it's not law. It's just informational. And I think that we want to continue that. We've had it in place for 30 years plus and we could certainly take that off. But the fact that we come in after the fact, because Kenneth had something that popped up unexpectedly next week and there's no way he knew about it before we had him, before we had another meeting. And he had, he had to make the trip. Then he comes in as a courtesy.
That's what I'm asking. So we're going to make exceptions when we need to.
As needed, as needed.
This is not written in stone. We're going to make exceptions when we need to.
That's what I would propose, yeah.
That's what I need to know. All right, and the next thing I have, Lord, I can't even keep up with the six hours and all of that. That's just too much. On number seven here, the general rule is that the county may not purchase meals using public funds. However, there are limited exceptions to the general rule. What are the exceptions?
If it's part of a training or event that is educational and it relates to the purpose of the travel, it's business related, it can't just.
So this pertains only to travel?
No, well, I mean, that rule stands, I mean, you can't, that's the same principle of law that prohibits you all from providing lunch for your employees here on site and using council funds for it.
And this is not going to go over well. And I'm not even saying I'm against it. It's just, we have it in these rules. Now I need to know if this is what we're going to do. And I understand, understand the reasoning for it. But we're providing meals for our work release and.
We're obligated to feed them.
Well, I know, but they're also, well, we don't have to take them to the restaurant, do we?
No, that's usually done.
But I mean, that is providing a meal with public funds when they could be at the jail or they could take a lunch with them. I'm not saying I'm against it. I'm just asking, if we have rules, are we going to just, are we going to just use some of them and not others?
No.
This, I will say, this applies to officials and employees. Inmates are handled differently and the feeding of inmates is.
So that's an exception to this rule?
Well, it's not an exception, it's just not, it doesn't, this is not applicable to. They're not employees or officials. This is, this, the vision here is that this would be put in the handbook because there is no current travel policy in the county's handbook.
Okay, that was my question. It's the very first statement on there is we couldn't use public funds to purchase meals. It doesn't say for whom or however. I know what it pertains to. I understand all of that.
Policy.
And I'm not even saying I'm against it. I just hate to put it into something and we pass it and then that not be what we do.
But this is, this is stated in a policy applicable to employees and officials related to travel. I mean, this, they're just, this, this has no, this.
Has no effect on what we do outside of travel.
This has no applicability, well, it has no applicability to inmates. The feeding and housing of inmates is addressed with very different laws that have very different, it's just too, I mean, we're talking about two apples and oranges. Just wanted to clarify for you that this has no applicability.
And that's what I needed you to do was to tell me that we're still okay doing what we're doing. And this does not apply to what, to that side of it.
Well, I don't know, I can't tell you that I know what we're doing over there. I can tell you that this does not apply to that.
Look, as long as we're not violating something we're not supposed to, then I'm good.
This is just for travel only.
But this is for travel only. This does not apply to other areas of the county.
Correct. If we, if we need to examine that, we absolutely can and we can pull all the statutes.
No, I just want to make sure that we're following what we're supposed to do.
Yes.
Okay.
What else?
Well, if you're so inclined and you want to adopt this policy, this is the version for your consideration. If you have any requests for change, we can make those. As it stands right now, you adopted an interim policy some number of months ago. So there is, you know, there is a Band-Aid in place, you know, today. But the, really the only room I would tell you that I see for you to consider a change, if you wanted to, was say, you know, we understand you have to deal with the meal allowances when they're provided. But, you know, one other area to simplify is a single rate for out of town, whether you're gone for six hours, seven, eight, nine, 10, anything less than overnight. I can make that change for you. The feedback that I received was that, you know, there are some quick trips that are taken and, you know, that when someone is only away from base for one meal, that you didn't want to be cushioning, so to speak. You know, that person who literally was only gone for one meal versus the person who's gone for two. So that was the attempt to create some equity there as it relates to the different situations that your employees encounter when they're traveling on your behalf.
Employee or elected officials, I know occasionally I go to those things for meetings. I go over and back. It's a trip out of the county. That might be a reimbursable meal, but I don't, I never have requested that. So I'm, because it's typically a four or five hour trip. And I think that looks like what you've addressed here. We're not going to pay meals just because you're away from Covington County. I choose to go to Troy to deliver documents to somebody and I just decided to eat lunch while I'm there. Not going to do that under this policy. So I think it's addressed all of the, as best we can, all of those possibilities. It can certainly be amended from time to time as the commission experiences things that you couldn't, you know, couldn't imagine. But this is a good starting point so that tomorrow we would know exactly what the reimbursements were. And I like the fact that it tracks with the federal rates that change from time to time. Sometimes the mileage rate changes twice in a year, but the per diems usually are pretty solid year by year, maybe longer. Looking over this, when I looked at it, it seems pretty cut and dry and very elementary versus. What's behind that though? What is the policy behind that?
It's the state of Alabama.
Well, I, I mean.
But does it have a policy behind it?
I've done the research.
Yeah, done this, but I didn't bring it with me.
You still have to do the meal deductions. I mean, that language that I put in your, I mean, it's verbatim from the federal GSA, or it's not GSA. your, I mean, it's verbatim from the federal GSA, or it's not GSA, it's, well, it may be, but it's codified in the Code of Federal Regulations. It applies to this, so this, I mean, they have to take the rate deductions too, according to statute for, for the meal allowances, and if they don't, you know, I, I can't speak to that, but it is in regulation.
It's just laid out, to make it simple, rather than the formulas that we have to
have Sonia go through or whatever.
It is, it's just a simple formula, and it's the very same thing, except that it's stated, and if every department head, even if you use the one you're talking about, if we're using a set number per day, all right, and we divide it up like this is done, then every department head gets that, and then that employee has some idea when they leave here, either you're going to pay for it, you're not, I'm going to furnish my own food, and just what you've just said, look, if I go somewhere, I'm going to buy my, my lunch.
I think it's pretty clear in the policy. I, I think it's, I think the departments will get very, very comfortable with it.
As long as we weren't making it more complicated for them to figure out, that, that was...
That's it, the fourth and the third and the whatever else is, and just name on the amount and say, look, this is it, if it changes, we'll let you know.
So I created this, and I apologize if you just, to help me.
Yeah, I looked at that last night.
Okay, I mean, is that, those amounts, those amounts are...
Actually, your numbers are a little higher than the state numbers, so I'm sure we'd be better off to...
Because we're using the federal rates.
I'm sure our employees would appreciate just sticking to that.
Or we can go with the state.
But the state adds a five-dollar extra, I guess that's for tips and whatever.
We could go with the state number and be stuck there for three or four years, because I can tell you, there's no way they're changing it. I mean, it's just, they don't, probably don't have the procedures in place allowing them to change it every year. Ours changes when the IRS changes, or the federal rates change, so. Other questions, comments? Ken, what do you want to...
I, I just think we'll go ahead with what we got here.
Is that a motion?
If we have, have any issues that reoccurs, we can always amend it and fix it.
That's right.
If anything comes up, it's a problem, how do we end up this, well, if it, like I said, we have, you know, two or three times or four times, then we'll see a need to change it, then we'll, I think it's when we need to do it.
And this will rip the Band-Aid off and will be set with fixing the...
With a good solid policy that's thoughtful and easy, relatively easy to apply. The effective date on this would be if, if there are most in September, September one?
Yeah.
So we'll entertain a motion if you're at that point, we can discuss it more, but a motion will be in order.
One quick thing, the department heads, can y'all handle, can y'all, y'all know y'all have looked at it, Leah's shaking his, Kevin's shaking his.
Seven pages to decide, that's a lot.
I believe they got it, have confidence in it.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
From what I've seen with the, the breakdown, the simple form she had, it's honestly fairly simple what was in the email. It was, so I'm going to go ahead and second off of what she sent the email.
Okay. So we have a motion, second. Now let's discuss anything.
No, I'm through.
All right, we have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
No.
Okay, that carried three to one, so that policy is adopted and be in place, September, effective September one. If you travel between now and then, you, you get the current per diem amount that's in place, or, all right. Thank y'all, appreciate the work on it, Morgan, Karen, and appreciate the input from all sides. Finished up our old business, moved to new business, consider resolution for poll worker pay increase, page two in your packet. Karen, what do you want to share with us?
I'm going to defer this to Morgan, please.
Okay, the, your poll workers have a daily rate that is provided by state law. Covington County also has a local law that allows you to authorize an additional supplement to, you know, to help recruit folks to serve in that critical role. And this is, in, in two thousand twenty-two, this commission voted to increase the supplement to fifty, to an additional fifty dollars per day, and what this is doing is putting it in a resolution form, there was a vote done then, but there needs to be a resolution on file, and so this is capturing an action that was taken in two thousand twenty-two, and so the effect of it is to continue the fifty dollars per day as a local supplement that is added to what the state reimburses to poll workers.
So we would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution that documents what we decided those months ago, so no change in rate, no change in cost, just documenting it properly with a resolution.
I'm making a motion.
Your motion is their second.
I'll say.
Motion and second, any questions or comments on this?
This is not an increase, this is just, just approving what we, what was approved in two thousand twenty-two.
Yes, yes.
And what is the daily rate now?
Our supplement's fifty dollars a day.
Yeah, but what's the daily rate? What do we pay?
One twenty-five, and for workers, one fifty for the inspector. If they take a class and become certified, it bumps twenty-five a day, so it becomes one fifty and one seventy-five. So you're adding fifty dollars onto whichever status, you know, if they, if they get the additional twenty-five from the state, you're adding fifty to one fifty.
And that, the one fifty and one seventy-five includes the supplement? The supplement's not on top of that?
No, it's on top of that.
It is, so it's two twenty-five?
The state rate, so I, what, the amount that I'm, okay, the county supplement is fifty dollars. The current state rate, it, it changed, it has changed, it changed in two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three, or it may have been two thousand twenty-one, excuse me. It's changed twice in the last three years.
Okay.
All right. Today, it is one twenty-five and one fifty plus stateside, plus an additional twenty-five if they, if they are trained and certified, so, yes, so, so it could be one fifty, one seventy-five, plus your fifty dollars.
And we also pay mileage to the inspector, right? The one, the chief inspector, okay?
All right, and that's what we've been doing, anybody want to change, or did we have a motion, we had a second, we've had discussion. Judge, you have anything on that?
No, they, they aren't able to hear me.
I know, I agree.
They're all there, they're there, they're sitting, they're sitting with the polls, and they get there an hour, and they're there an hour or two after, so they aren't able to hear me.
Right.
They can't leave for lunch, they can't leave for any reason, you can't pay for none of it, it's fourteen hours easy.
Yeah. Well, with all that encouragement and support for it, surely we all would vote yes, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. All right.
Maybe they'll help recruit someone.
All right. Consider a revised long-term detention subsidy contract for youth services, page three and four, and let Karen share with us a little update on this.
Okay, so we received this from our youth services last week. They've asked for us to have the updated contract presented to you, and as you can see on page four, they have highlighted different areas where they have made changes on it. There was a amended act, Alabama Act two thousand twenty-four, three oh five, code section twelve fifteen, two fifteen, that's the way it was listed, that they're doing a subsidy, subsidize a detention for the children in licensed juvenile detention facility pursuant to the code twelve fifteen, two oh eight, and to reimburse the county commission responsible for the cost of detention required by that code. And then the, the DYS will also check, shall pay on behalf of the county, the per diem expenses incurred for each day after DYS is required to accept the children for commitment. Of course, you can keep on reading this, after the twelve business days or sixteen business days between October first, two thousand twenty-four, and September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, including but not limited to medical, dental, and mental health services, cost, health cost, as required by the code section. But there's been a lot of talk about these changes lately, there's a lot in the works, I believe, that they're trying to improve on this, the burden that's put on the counties. And Greg, I think you've been to some meetings that...
There was a breakout workshop at the convention last week that addressed some of this. It, it does put more responsibility on Department of Youth Services, there's a question of how quickly the, the courts will move to, there's a trigger within the, counting the days, and, and at that trigger, then the Department of Youth Services will take responsibility so many days later. So it does stand to help us a lot. We don't, if somebody gets backlogged in the system, then at some point, they're going to come off of our role and become part of the state's responsibility. Not sure how much it will save us, if any, but it does kind of give us a, an upper limit on what we're going to expend on, on youth that are in detention. One other thing, not directly related to this, because this is addressing recent legislation, as she said, from the state, but our detention facility is in Dothen. They've proposed an increase, a per-day increase on the, on what we pay for youth there. There's been a lot of discussion, and I went to a meeting of several counties, and then week before last, where we were discussing in great detail that rate, how it was determined, and whether they might drop that rate back, so I think there's a chance they'll pull it back some. You know, you, we don't think about it, it's kind of hidden, so and, and the public certainly never realizes that there's a cost to youth detention. If the city of Andalusia takes a child into custody, they deliver them to the county jail, if, if that's appropriate, then they become our responsibility, although it may be related to a city, city ordinance, it may not be a state law even, and, but there, there's a good bit of burden related to that financially, and so between the sheriff's office and what he has to deal with, and our off, our financing of those costs, and then the Department of Youth Services, and the, the parole officers that deal with those kids, it's a pretty heavy burden, so we want to minimize that as much as we can. Sheriff, what, what do you want to comment?
My, my question, in the, in the contract, does it mention anything about transportation? And, and here's one, if the county arrests a juvenile, we are responsible for transporting that person to the juvenile detention center in, in Dothen, because there are arrests, and they have not, and we have no facilities here. However, any other agency, they, they drop them off here and we have transported them, when, we're, we're one of the very few counties that does that. Most other counties, if, if, let's say Andalusia makes a arrest for, on a juvenile, they transport their own juvenile to the, to the center over in Dothen. Does it mention anything in there about transport? Because what happens is, is we have two or three people out on the evening shift, and they make an arrest, and then we've got to get them over to Dothen, and they've got just as many people out, if not more than we do.
Right.
And it's become, it's become, it's been a problem for years, but it'd be nice to have something in stone that would, that would address that problem.
That wasn't addressed in this legislation, it's still our responsibility, is what I understand, to transport. Problem is, you transport them over, three days later, they have to come before the judge, and you have to go back and get them and bring them back for that.
That's not a problem, once they're over there and they have to come to the judge, we do, we, we can actually work that into our schedule.
But they can, like the seventy-two-hour hearing, they can do that by video, so I hope that we're encouraging use of video conferencing as much as possible. They have the capability there, and we need, if we don't have that, we need to look at that here. That isn't addressed here, I hear what you're saying, if there's some counties that you know that the local municipalities are doing the transport, you might ask those sheriffs if that's not by agreement between the city and county.
Well, even when I was a highway patrolman, and I would arrest a youth for DUI and had to go to detention facility, I took them, that's just how we do it, but I'm not sure how we got into a county, a deputy transporting another agency's arrest, but it's something that I think I'd look into.
Well, you're, well, you're housing them too. Under the state law, we, counties responsible for housing them, again, even though they're arrested, taken into custody under an ordinance of the city, not, not a county or not a state law. So it's, it's not ideal, but I think we have no obligation, unless you know of something, but I think we are obligated to enter this contract, or at least consider it closely. I don't know if we have a deadline on acting, October one, I think is the deadline, so certainly maybe before then, be no care.
Let's see, the discretion you have is identifying the center, you're using a center in Dothen, if you, if you wanted to use a different eligible detention center, that, that would be up for discussion.
But the, but the...
The changes here are predicated by the changes in the law. But the issue related to transportation is certainly something that I think we could look after the sheriff to see if there are any cost savings there that we can identify for him.
Okay, good deal. Questions, any other comments? So we have before us an agreement with Department of Youth Services related to how they will, how they will take the load, the burden, the financial burden for a youth that are in detention off of us, and what the trigger mechanisms are, and so I really think that by state law, we're bound to...
And y'all had already chosen, I think, at the last meeting, the diversion center in Dothen, so...
We did, yeah, and we, we've already made that decision, so really, we're just adopting the, the agreement, right?
That's right, that's right.
So we need a motion to enter this contract with Department of Youth Services.
I'll say.
There's a motion, is there a second? All right, we have a motion and second. Really, it's administrative, as I see it, I don't think we, you know, it's not something we've negotiated or have authority and negotiate, state law dictates, so...
It's kind of clear funds and stuff.
Yeah, all right, we have a motion and second, any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. All right, that was approved. Next is, next one is consider renewal of contract with Avenue Insights. We have the attorney and the administrator reviewing that, there are some unanswered questions on that, so unless someone is opposed, we will flip that over to the next meeting for action. We're not ready to act on it today with these uncertainties.
And Avenue Insights is the ones who collect our...
Sales tax.
Sales tax.
Sales, lodgings, yes, yes. You have two options, and I'm aware you have Avenue, who is, has become a national firm, they started in Birmingham, but they've grown. You have Avenue or you have the State Department of Revenue. Many years ago, State Department of Revenue had all county collections, and their rates, their fees per account and per dollar had gotten so high that Avenue, as a private business, was able to come in, law was changed to allow them to contract with states and municipalities. And almost every single, not state, counties and municipalities, almost every county and municipality went to them at one time. Some of that's changed back, the Department of Revenue has gotten a little more in line with their fees, but the reporting and stuff that this entity does, I think, is of interest. Folks like Ms. Karen really like what they offer in the reporting function, so, anyway, we'll look at that for the next meeting. I encourage you commissioners to talk to Karen about that, that would come familiar with it for that next meeting, too.
RDS, was it prior to Avenue?
Same company, it's just a, yeah, that's right. All right, let's do one more item, we'll take a five-minute recess, so. Consider travel for border registrars, page five and six in your packet, Karen.
On page five and six, you'll see an agenda for a conference coming up in September, September thirteenth, that's given by the Alabama Association of Border Registars. It's coming to you all because the state is not reimbursing for this training course, and so if y'all choose to allow them to go, the burden of expenses will be on the county, and so they need to know whether or not y'all will allow them to attend and pay the expenses incurred.
But the whole, is all of them going to attend?
All three usually go.
Two.
Oh, two, I'm sorry, okay, so all three is going this time. Usually, they close down for trainings and all three go. There's usually very few trainings for registrars, and so they try to attend as much as possible.
And this is just a one-day event?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm next, a motion.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
You have a mo, second, timing, any other questions or comments on it? Judge, you have reason not to support their attendance at this, or it makes sense?
More training is available.
All right, so you've heard from the judge, if there's nothing else, we'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, we'll, we'll cover the cost for them getting that training. Let's recess until five, till...